Board meeting to order. Can I get roll call please? Mrs. Gleason, here.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Campworth, here. Mrs. List, here. Ms. Sterns, here. Mr. Wickholm.
Here.
Mrs. Russell. Here. Please stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to board item two, board minute approval. Can I get a motion to approve the December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickholm. Any discussion? Roll call please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickholm?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth, aye. Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Moving on to comments from the public. Do we have any public comments? All right, moving on to our reports, our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Just a few district highlights. Last Friday, I appreciate all the hard work that the supervisors put into our department, district institute. Each of the departments got together, shared best practices, current technologies. Also want to thank all of our teachers. I was able to make it to many of the departments and they were engaged, again, hoping to professional development and I thought it was a very productive day overall, so appreciate you know the hard work that went into organizing and hosting our institute day last Friday. A little shout out for Hillcrest High School. They have a real estate career day planned for January twenty-sixth. Any students that are either here tonight or watching the video hear about it, we have a real estate career day, so requirements of what's required to become a Realtor, if you're interested in flipping houses, getting involved in the market that way, investing, marketing and branding, finance and estate sales. So just want to give congrats to Brandon Mathis who spent a lot of time organizing that, and then the teachers who are allowing the students to come down third or fourth period and see that live, should be a really pretty neat event. Again, just another way to build those pathways and career options for our students. And then finally, congrats to all four buildings. We had, as a district, seventy Illinois State Scholars recently recognized. It's a, you know, pretty important accomplishment, puts students across the state, the top ten percent, along their peers, so just congratulations to all the work that goes into that and to our students who achieved that accomplishment for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our employee requests.
All right. Since our last board meeting, we've had two employee requests. One from Karen Garcia, Smart Pro Cure requested all current employees' staff contact information, including first name, last name, position, title, department, direct phone number, business cellphone, email address, office address, address city, state, zip. This request has been completed. And also Sheri Reed, Smart Pro Cure, requested all purchasing records from nine twenty twenty-two to current to include purchase order number, purchase date, line item details, including quantity and price, vendor ID number, name, address, contact information. This request has been completed as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our principal reports.
Happy New Year. Just a little bit of timeless passions we've seen, so just wanted to let you know that over break, of course, students were not in attendance, but we had lots of work happening with our, a great big thank you to our custodians, our electricians, our carpenters who were there installing all of the different purchases that were made for the innovation grants. So we had students return to a bunch of new furniture in classrooms, sit-to-stand desks, movable furniture for the teachers, so there was quite a bit of excitement over that, as well as the collaboration lab that we've opened at Oak Forest High School. So that was an interesting little gift when they came back, so we appreciate that. Of course, sports were still going on over the break. We have some conference competitions coming up this weekend. We have cheer on Friday night. Their theme this year is girl power and it's quite an exceptional routine to watch. They actually were invite champions on Sunday this week. We have wrestling conference on Saturday and our boys brought home the sectional championship trophy over break, so great news on the sports front. And then today, all four of the buildings attended a freshman leadership at the Bridges Teen Center in their lead university program, and all four of the building students were able to package up over a hundred and thirty-eight bags of clothing for the thrift store as part of their service project. So we're just getting back in the swing of things as we start off the second semester. So that's news from not only Oak Forest, but from the whole district, so thank you very much.
Good evening from Bremen High School. Would also like to thank you for the innovation grant. We had a lot of smiling faces. Our students just really enjoyed the upgrades. Our IMC furniture was upgraded a couple months ago and then we had a handful of classrooms that were also upgraded over break, so it's fun. The kids compared our IMC to Starbucks vibe, which is some of the flexible furniture. I mean, you change up the seating or whiteboards on top of desks and they really feel special, so thank you guys for that. We had our honors assembly to welcome back students for this semester. We honored two hundred and twenty-five students with an honors bingo breakfast. We also added for the first time a rock, paper, scissors tournament. So students, Mr. Blackwell added that. They walked in and they got a pair of beads and they played one-on-one head-to-head rock, paper, scissors, and if you lost, you gave your beads to your opponent and then you had to cheer them on. So two hundred and twenty-five kids in our main gym and it ended with a head-to-head competition between two different students, won one a prize, but it was really cool to see just an eclectic mix of students celebrating each other and that way they had a lot of fun. And we played some games of bingo, had McDonald's breakfast. Teachers each nominated three students for that recognition, so that was really special. We have another Evans Scholar this year, so this was an early announcement that Nellie Spango, she is a senior, earned the Evans Scholarship and that is going to cover her full room and board and tuition for her kid experience, so we're excited to announce that. We welcomed the class of twenty twenty-seven this past week, last week that is, which sounds crazy to say. A lot of timid, shy faces coming in, but it was exciting to see them, as they left that night, they talked through, picked some electives and were kind of warming up, so we're getting excited to welcome our new freshmen next year. And then SAT prep is kicking off. They had a pre-test today. They're going to be kicking that off, getting ready for our April testing. An access testing for our English learners is right around the corner, so we are implementing an access testing boot camp and we've been doing a lot of prep work there, so we're excited to see all of that hard work pay off. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Happy New Year. Personally, I just need to say hi to everyone I got. I'm very excited to be back and to leave home, much more well-rested, just being back and getting in the group with all of our students and seeing all their faces. It's been a really fun week. Very strange for me to come back in and have to read introductions and get to know some of our new students, but it's been so wonderful. I'd like to thank you guys too, as well as thank Eric Gomez for allowing me to have that opportunity. He did a wonderful job while I was gone and the staff and students are already asking about him and miss him, so don't have to change that soon. No, so I'm very grateful for that opportunity that I was able to have as well that Eric was able to have while he was over there. So one of the initiatives that I was looking forward to implementing before I left was hiring Deana Delrich to be a new counselor over at the program, and she is doing a fantastic job. Very proud of the work that she's put in so far with one of our initiatives to really be making sure that our students are ready, not only for finishing high school, but also moving on and being prepared for what's next, whether that's community college, four university, trade school, what have you. So first semester, we had seventeen students finish their credits and graduate through Delta and achieve, and because of that, that's kind of generated some looks that she wants to do the second semester, so already we have five field trips that are booked between January and February alone for our students. They're going to be to Marin Valley, South Suburban College, Paul Mitchell, here, Cosmality Schools, sorry, and two service trips, one to the Humane Society. So our students did that once last year, really took to it, and she's booked that again. And from that alone, from our seventeen graduates that we had, we have two students who are working with the Navy recruit and are on their way to join the Navy. We have one who has applied to local one thirty-four electrician unit. That's another field trip that's booked in February for others to join and see their apprenticeship program. And we have eleven students who are starting the process to enroll in community college or trade school out of the seventeen who left us last semester, so things are going well. She's doing a great job of getting those initiatives up and running and I'm just happy to be here.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the Titans, our freshman leadership program today also joined the other schools at the Bridge Teen Center and just what rave reviews from the kids. And I know many of you have been to the teen, the Bridge Teen Center to see it. It's really just an amazing place. Not only did they get to go through some different leadership exercises while they were there, I know our students said they spent two hours in the thrift store helping, as they said, bagging up clothes, sorting clothes. That is, that helps them with their finances as they, you know, they run the teen bridge center, along with the myriad of donations that they get from local businesses. But if you haven't ever been there, I suggest at some point in time to stop over and see what they have to offer for all of our kids. Pretty amazing. We too, last Monday, had our freshman orientation for the class of twenty twenty-seven. Doesn't that seem like a long way away, twenty twenty-seven? Pack's Gym, I mean, it always amazes me. You know, we've talked from time to time about having it, not having it, you know, COVID threw a little wrench in there and then we brought it back, but full gym, parents, kids, asking questions, walking around the building, hearing from different people about registration offerings, academics, athletics, different curriculum, and that was a way to really start it back. It was Monday, our first day back at school and to come Monday night and have a packed gym of excited people, asking lots of questions. So I know the Titans are looking forward to stay, just because I think everybody deserves the opportunity to come and walk the halls of their future school and have something to get excited about in just a few short months. On the athletic front, we had two bowlers make it to sectionals and so we're wishing them well and excited. We had Andrew Kepke, one of our seniors, he won the Custer Wrestling Invite at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-two pounds. Our play, Alison Wonderland, got an opportunity to perform at the State Theater Festival this weekend. They were honored to be selected to do that. And today also kicked off our SAT prep program for our juniors. It's during their lunch periods. We have seventy-seven kids that are registered to attend these SAT prep classes during their lunch periods and we're not giving up, we're shooting for a hundred. So that's what we got going on, send the word.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. Few things. Last Wednesday, we had a group of Hillcrest students, one of our social studies teachers, Tiffany Mulcavy, brought a group of students over to Village of Hazel Press City Hall for Martin Luther King Roundtable. Mayor Alsbury, mayor of Hazel Press, puts this on every year, and the students that Hazel Press serves, so there were some Thornwood kids and Mary Catholic kids, obviously Hillcrest kids, showing the brightest while they were there, but it was a great, great event. You know, it was in their main area where they host their village meetings and it was, Mayor Alsbury focused the conversation on leadership, so where did Martin Luther King? How did he lead? How did he become a leader? Those types of things, and how can those students apply those types of things to their own personal lives? It was a great event. We had a small celebration right here, right before graduate, right before the end of the semester for our early graduates. We had twenty-six students graduate early this past semester, so the, Brandy Mathis, who Dr. Skora mentioned earlier, had each of them do a little presentation. So it was basically what's their fondest memory, what would be some advice that they would give to other Hillcrest students, and what is it that they're planning on doing? Out of the twenty-six, I would say probably twenty of them already had plans, enrolled at South Suburban College, those types of things for this semester, so getting started right away. And the others either had jobs or trades that they were lined up for, so they're all no longer hawks, they'll still walk graduation with us in May, but they're gone from us right now in our classrooms and it sounds like they all have a bright future. And then, boys' basketball. I know I talked last, last meeting about it, but since we last met, our boys won the prestigious Big Dipper Tournament that Rich Township puts on. And strangely enough, I found this out, it's Coach Houston's first-ever holiday tournament win. So as illustrious of a career as he's had with state championships and super sectional and sectional, he never won a holiday tournament, so it was special for him. He was named coach of the tournament and Quentin Hattie, one of our seniors, was named MVP of the tournament. Also, Monday, they were featured on Channel Twenty-Six, The U, which I don't get because I have DirecTV, but they played Curie in the MLK Shootout. They won that game by eight and Quentin Hattie led all scores with thirty-three points. One other part, I know we talk about the successes and those types of things, but what I'm seeing develop in our athletic department right now, I'm really proud of, you know, with new athletic director Maurice Young doing a fantastic job and he and I, when we met, we've talked about the process a lot, the process of what it means to be a student athlete, and we're starting to see some of the fruits of his labor with the coaches with some success and, you know, we talked about, it's not necessarily talking to your coaches and your athletes about winning, losing, those types of things, but the lessons that you learn. So this past Saturday, our dance program, first time ever, finished in the top three in conference. It took third place in conference. Our boys bowling program, same thing, first time ever, top three in conference. So some of those life lessons and the persistence and teamwork and all the things that you can learn from athletics, starting to definitely see through with some of our older programs. So hopefully we're not always up here just talking about basketball. All right. We've got two presentations tonight. First, our Assistant Principal of Teaching and Learning, Amy DeForty, is going to talk a little bit about our new Five Star Program. Some of the other schools in the district are using this as well, but she's going to kind of show everyone the successes that we've had throughout the first semester with using Five Star with our student block. Then we'll have Tyler, Tyler Tini, one of our deans, come up and talk about the Active Reengagement Center, the ARC program that we've gotten started this semester as well.
Thank you.
Good evening. So Hillcrest did roll out a new tool this semester called Five Star Student. So Five Star Student is a program that allows us to track students' attendance and participation in events, clubs, anything that's happening after school. And that's how we started using Five Star, but it's really become so much more, so I'd like to share some of those great things with you tonight. So Five Star Student tracks everything that our students are doing after school. So you can see right here, fifty-six point two percent of our students have been involved this semester. This allows us to have conversations with those students that are not involved and encourage them to get involved for that forty-three point eight percent. So that was the original goal, to increase the student participation and involvement. The problem was that students didn't know how to do that. I can't join a sport, it's too late. It's never too late to join a club or activity, they weren't exactly sure where to go and find this information. Well, Five Star makes it really easy. Students have access to this list, they can simply click on whatever it is they're interested in finding more information about. It leads them right to the sponsor's email, that sponsor gets a notification, and now the student is able to join the club. So in one semester, we have already increased the number of students that are involved in clubs and activities by fifteen percent. As of today, we have four hundred and ten participants. Some of those students do participate in multiple clubs. And this does not include any of our sports programs and it doesn't include e-sport, which is going to be huge at Hillcrest. We have a lot of students that are interested in that. We don't have tryouts until next week for that though. So it's really easy for our students. They have a calendar of events, they're, they can click on the calendar, see everything that's offered that day. It says what time, where the location is. You know, the days of planners for students are gone, but this is a way to keep them organized. It's also a way for our sponsors and coaches to work together to see, okay, there's some overlapping, these students are involved in these things at the same time, and allow them to do multiple things and work on their schedules. And every time that they go to something that's on that calendar, they receive points. So if you go to the key club meeting, you're going to receive points. If you go to the basketball game after school, you're going to receive points. If you attend after-school tutoring, you get points, and as the points add up, it allows us to recognize students. So every time that students are earning those points, we're giving them prizes, gear, we give them quarterly high point winners, or they get gift cards and things that are really making it fun for them, and having assemblies. We had a large assembly at the end of the semester for any student that had forty or higher points, went all the way up to a student had a hundred and twenty points for attending. Two hundred and sixty-eight students qualified for this assembly, it was just a lot of fun. That's a famous TikToker, I don't know who he is, students knew, they got to do fun dances with him and sing along and it was just a really good time. So this is how it started, but it's been so much more than that. So during the school day, we're using it on a daily basis as well, and we've, we have become a fully digital hall pass school now. We don't use paper passes. The only time you have a paper pass is if you are a substitute teacher because they're not in our Five Star program and they don't have a way to add them yet. So this is what the teacher sees on their end. So a student needs a hall pass, they click here, there's a drop-down menu that leads them to any location in our school, they click where they want to go, they enter in the student's ID. They can also see, if you see in the blue boxes, how many students are in each of the locations. So we can set limits, right now the limit is five, there could only be five students in the orange bathroom at one time, so they can see that if I sign this pass, you're not going to be able to go right now, you're going to have to wait. So it's kind of, it's kind of adding a level of security in our hallways as well. It zooms over to the student's phone, the student now goes into the hallway, it's got a five-minute clock on it, everyone that's in the hallway can stop and to see this running clock and we know their destination and how much time they have to get there. And not only can we see how many students, we can see exactly which students are in the hallway. So you can see the teacher that signed it, the location that they were in, which student, where they're going and how much time. So you can see that again, this is really just another layer of security in our hallways. In addition to hall passes, we use this for ticket sales of major events. So we use it for our powder hooking, where you can see we had five hundred and thirteen students purchase tickets. We had used it for our homecoming dance, we had four hundred and ten students purchase tickets. We used it for our recognition assembly, we didn't have a ticket purchase, but we were able to preload a roster. So there's a lot of benefits to this. First off, it's really fast check-in at the door. We know exactly who's coming in our door before they get there, it's already, you know, a roster. We've got the ability to have cashless entry, so we're going to be using this for prom tickets as well. It timestamp to the kids when they come in, so we're checking a student in, we know what time that they came in. We use it for our bonfire, we checked them out, so we knew exactly what time they left. So the students had, or parents said, my student was at the bonfire, yep, but they left at eight fifteen, we have that information, so it's just really a great way to communicate and keep track of students. And we have the ability to refund if needed, so if a student was sick, couldn't attend at the answer with one click of a button, we can refund their credit card pretty simply. So that's been really successful as well. So that's how we use it so far for semester. Second semester, I've already got a lot of people reaching out, we've got creative ways now that we're going to be using this. The IMC is tracking library attendance, as you can imagine, we've got a lot of students coming in and out of here all the time. Our counselors have been using it for career cluster findings and Strike Explorer to track which students have completed certain things. Our core and SOAR programs are developing a behavior system, we're thinking of reward students for doing the right thing in the classroom, and we're looking to eliminate what we currently use, which is a digital ID, so that we have a one-stop shop for everything, because it does have a digital ID feature as well. All right, so it's been very successful for us and we look forward to continue to work with the many features that it offers. Any questions?
Is this just at Hillcrest right now?
So all four buildings are using it, we're just kind of all at different levels. We just really dove in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, thank you for your time.
Yeah. Hello. How's everybody doing? All right, I'm here to talk about the Hillcrest first semester data for the ARC program, which is the Active Reengagement Center. First of all, I would like to just thank you guys for taking a chance on a program like that. It's been a positive experience for me and I think I'll show through the data that it's been a positive experience for our students also. So also, I want to take the time to thank the administration at Hillcrest High School. Starting a new program is not easy, so I really want to thank Principal Towner and Ms. DeForty and our deans for communicating and helping to support the students and to get that program up and running. Our teachers have been wonderful with giving me the information that I need to help our students succeed, our maintenance staff, and I want to give a shout out to my paraprofessional, Mr. Terrence Bell, he's been wonderful in there, so he's built a great rapport with our students and he's doing a great job. So if you think back, what, when this all started, what was the rationale for this program? The rationale was we were trying to create some flexibility within Hillcrest High School to try to decrease some of our alternative placements, some of our suspensions and even expulsions. So we were looking for another, another area that we could support our students without, within our program, within Hillcrest High School. So that was kind of the idea behind it. At that time, at that time, when we were looking at this, there was a problem with some of our outplacements, they were full, like Rise and Embudsman was shut down in one of its, one of its sites, and then we realized that tech and trade was not really a viable option for some of our, for some of our students at Hillcrest High School. So obviously our goal is to always, always keep as many of our students as possible with, within Hillcrest High School, so that's kind of how the ARC was born. So what does the ARC provide our students? So number one, it's a small, safe environment. I constantly have students that want to come back and be an ARC because it's quiet, it's safe, they can think, they don't have to deal with the traffic of the hallways and they can, then they just find more success and they're working independently. We built in weekly social work groups for our students. Our social workers have been amazing. They come in once a week and hit on a topic of choice that week, something that we think is going to help the students, whether it be anger management or just anything like that. Our psychologist is, oh my gosh, her name's gone from my head right now, Reed Scott, she volunteered this semester to do a weekly anger management group for us. So we have a lot of students who get into conflicts and they don't know how to resolve those conflicts, so she's doing an anger management group with them once a week. We also do restorative meetings, so that is just a topic we choose and we just kind of process with the students, whether it be integrity, how do you know your friend is a good friend, just anything that we think is going to be beneficial to our students in that room to kind of help them navigate things. An online curriculum, this is the big one, our students are able to work on, at their own pace, so they can watch the videos online and, I'm sorry, I have to get my water. They can watch their videos, they can watch videos online and move at their own pace and sometimes it can even turn into credit recovery for them if they're doing well. They're awful, they're offered the same academic assistance as any other students, they have the ARC staff to help them and then we'll give them tutors as needed, and they still have access to paper.co. When any student comes in, I have an individual meeting with each one of them, kind of processing, how did you get here? What can we do differently? Who did you harm in the process? How do we make that right? So that's one of the big things that we do coming into the program. We do have a positive and encouraging environment, we do have point system and incentives. One of the biggest things is consistency, they're working with the same two people all day long and the expectations are the same. They're not going from class to class where there's different expectations. And then finally, check and connect. I tell every student that comes in, once you're here, you're a part of the ARC family and we don't forget about them. I still check in with every kid that's been in the program, check in with them, how are you doing? Are your grades good? Are you on track behaviorally? And that's kind of been a really positive thing. And then so far this year, we've had, many students are coming back, like I said, to the program because it's a safe place for them, whether they just want to talk, process a situation. I believe it has prevented at least three fights, coming and telling me something going on and sometimes they're telling about their friends, sometimes it's about them, but I believe it's been a great place for them to come and give us information that prevents issues in the school. All right, so we do have two different types of placements. We have short-term placements and we have long-term placements. So far, we have had, short-term placements are ten days or less and those students continue to work within their Google classrooms, they're getting their assignments from their teachers and they continue to work. And we've had thirty-four students so far that were there for ten days or less. And then our long-term placements are semester placements, now that could be at any point during the semester, but they're with us the rest of the year and they are working through a genuity. So you can see there've been thirty-four short-term and fourteen long-term placements so far. Just kind of the numbers here, our first student was enrolled on August thirtieth. Our average enrollment for the semester was eight point three-three students. Our highest weekly average was fifteen point five, and then the most students we've had enrolled at one time were seventeen. Obviously, we know enrollment and attendance are two different things, so our attendance numbers are a little different. We average about six point five, six and a half students, I'm sorry, for the semester, and then our highest weekly average was eleven point eight, and then the most students we've had in the program at once was fourteen. So this is, our long-term placements, and when we're talking credits, our long-term placements were fourteen students and they accounted for twenty-nine and a half credits earned. So seven of those students earned all three credits for the semester, and then of those seven students, three were failing every single class when they got to us. So that's three kids that were failing in the twenty and thirty, forty percent range and then every single one of them passed all of their classes, so we were very proud of that. And then the remaining seven students accounted for eight point five credits. Of those seven students, they were failing about twenty-seven classes. Of those seven students, they were failing about twenty-seven classes. We did learn that edgenuity is not for everybody, that online curriculum does not work for everybody. Some students are, are, are more successful than others. Um, but every single student earned at least some sort of, at least a half a credit for the semester. Um, our short-term placements, ten days or less, we served thirty-four students. Um, thirty of those students are still Hillcrest students. Two of them have transferred out, and two of them were alternatively placed. Um, the thirty remaining students accounted for eighty point seven-five credits earned. I'm sorry, that's a lot of numbers. Any questions on that so far? All right, so I just want you to pay attention to the sixty percent and up column in both sides. So we had students entering ARC. We had thirty-seven students who had grades that were sixty percent or up, so passing grades. By the end of the semester, we had fifty-eight students that had passing, I'm sorry, there were fifty-eight passing grades for those students. So twenty-one students improved to a passing grade through coming to ARC. So this is just kind of a visual representation of that. So give the idea. All right, our short-term placements, so twenty-eight of our students, of the thirty-four, twenty-eight were placed in ARC for fighting. Twenty-seven of those students did not repeat that behavior. So we were pretty proud of that. Six were placed in ARC for, for various other reasons and did not return to ARC. Um, as I already stated, two were alternatively placed and two moved. Um, four students came to ARC for a short-term placement and then returned for a long-term placement, um, for various reasons. They, some of our students just have trouble getting to class and, and things like that, but they didn't repeat their behaviors. All right, so this is what we're most proud of. So when I polled the dean, so one of our biggest goals was to create flexibility at Hillcrest and decrease our outplacements and decrease our spent suspensions. When I polled the deans, there were fifteen students that would have been outplaced if not for the ARC program this year. So they would have been, um, alternatively placed at another school if not for the ARC program. And that kind of represents, there were five freshmen, three sophomores, five juniors, and two seniors who would not have been with us. So we're very proud that we were able to keep fifteen students here at Hillcrest that otherwise would have been someplace else. And then any short-term placement would have probably counted for a suspension day. So we were able to decrease our out-of-school suspensions by a hundred and eighty-three point five days through the use of the ARC program. So something else that we're very proud of. Um, then I, I polled the students just to get an idea of what they thought of the program because, um, obviously, they're the most important thing. Um, so we asked, do you think the ARC program helped you? If so, how? Um, yes, it focused me more, I was able to pay attention. My two helpful teachers pushed me to be better, kept them out of trouble, brought up their grades, um, helped me not make more bad decisions, and it also helped me by bringing up my grades, stayed, um, helped stay on my work, helped me in numerous ways, learned a lot. And I just asked what their favorite part of the ARC program was. If you recall, it's a shortened schedule, which, that obviously is a, is a popular thing amongst the students. Um, so, uh, one student said they had a lot of good moments, most of all, everybody getting along, laughing and joking. Um, I really enjoyed the one that says, getting to be theirself. So not being lost in the crowd, they get to be theirself in a smaller environment. So that, that meant a lot to me. Um, and then just the staff members. So, um, I feel like we're making a difference with kids. I was really proud of the work we, we did. There's still a lot of work to do, we still have a lot to learn. Um, and, but we're going to keep pushing, and I'm looking forward to having a, an awesome second semester. So any questions?
No questions, but this is amazing. Thank you for sharing it with us.
Very impressive, thank you.
Thank you to both of our presenters. Please do your presentations. All right, we're going to move on to board member reports. Do we have any board member reports?
Eleven. Um, we met on January ninth, the, uh, School Treasurers Board met, and I sent all of you an email copy of his annual report. It had a lot of interesting points, you know, for the bad market that we've been in, but he's been able to take advantage of things as, as the interest rates started rising for the end of the year. And on another good note, we just renewed his contract for another three years, and we have him on board, and he's doing a great job.
Thank you. Any other board member reports? All right, moving on to new business. Item five point one, bill, addendum to bills, payroll, CDS bills. Ms. Morrison.
Item five point one is our January twenty twenty-three monthly items, bills, addendum to bills, payroll, CDS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Campworth?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye. Item five point two, Dr. Skora?
Mrs. Russell, on behalf of Dr. Williamson, who does this, uh, I was tasked with the, uh, the task of, of considering overnight field trips. Uh, so if you had a chance to review them, they do try to pay particular attention, and not missing the many days of school, trying to keep the cost down. So Bremen Band, Hillcrest Adventure Club, and Marching Band, and then Old Forest, the girls softball, boys baseball, and then a long-boys baseball trip to, to get approved. Uh, good experiences, and I am recommending all of these trips for full board approval.
So moved. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion?
How long has the adventure club been a thing?
Recent, recent, uh, recent group, I want to say this is either the first year or second year, one of the social workers, uh, Mrs. Trezenberg does that here, and they're looking, in this particular trip, it's Willow Springs, so it's local, but, uh, the, the